I don't see cinnamon rolls.
That's for our July meeting, that's July.
We could have three up to us. Could have gotten smaller.
Sorry to find good people in this area, Greg. Ready? Yes.
Good evening, everyone. This evening, we're gonna run two meetings concurrently. We will begin with the public hearing for the budget, which is now open. Is there anyone present that would like to address the board regarding the 2024-2025 budget? Okay, so I inherit none. So I will now call the Lapeer Community School Board of Education meeting to order. And we will begin with a pledge of allegiance. Mrs. LaBarre, would you please guide us through the pledge?
Absolutely.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mrs. LaBarre.
You're welcome.
Okay, next section is public comment. But I don't see any kind of cards for this evening. So I do go ahead right into our reports. We begin with the policy committee. Dr. Novak, would you please share the policy committee report?
Yes. Thank you. So on June seventh, we met 1:00 p.m. via Zoom. I was myself, Jamie Wobber, and Craig Watson as committee members. Others attending included Matt Landry, Kim Secretly, and Mary Moss. We discussed policy fifty-four sixty, which is graduation requirements. This policy has been updated to reflect newly required legislative updates, personal finance as a required course, and the tax departments. We discussed A G fifty-four sixty, graduation guidelines. This A G has been updated to reflect the current best practices and to compile all language in one place in order to avoid duplicate information. Earning credit section along with personal curriculum has been updated. Has been updated. Policy twenty-three seventy, academic exceptions expanding and extending to learning opportunities. This is basically just a removal of the duplicate policy and I'm meeting adjourned at 1:21.
Any questions or comments? Thank you, Dr. Novak. And next we'll do the finance negotiations. Dr. Watson, would you please share the report?
Certainly. The committee members there, Craig Watson, Silver Putnam, and Lisa Novak, others attending, Matt Landry, Erica Engels, Mark Rader, Brian Bader, Julia Peruski from Arganello, and Mary Moss. Meeting called to order at 2:00 p.m. via Zoom. We discussed cash flow borrowing. Mark Rader explained that we would be borrowing again this year in order to cover the increase in grant costs and the higher than budgeted loss of students. It was consensus, the committee, to add this to today's board agenda for full board consideration. Food service charcoal contract. Mark Rader explained that the food service contracts are regulated by the state of Michigan. Districts must go out for bid on food service contracts every five years, which we did in the spring of 2020, and renew them annually. The district will go out for bid next year. The district is recommending that the contract with charcoal be renewed for the 2024-2025. It was consensus committee to recommend full board approval at the next meeting. Bond change orders number two, bid pack five point one, high school additions, gas line. Arganello recommends the issuance of a change order to Dickerson Mechanical to revise the gas piping on the roof at Lapeer High School an amount not to exceed thirty-two thousand, six hundred, sixty-five dollars and eighty-three cents. The size of the gas piping needed to increase from two and a half inches to three inches to accommodate for the additional buildings per footage for the upcoming Performing Arts Center addition coming in 2025. This change order not only increases the gas piping, but also extends the gas piping to the connection location of the pack addition. It was the consensus, the committee, to recommend full board approval at the next meeting, and we adjourned at 2:15.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
I have a question. I see Julia's not here, so I'm sorry that I'm sure somebody can answer. I'm just curious about the extension for the gas line. Did we not factor that into the original plans that that was gonna go there? So is that why the increase?
Okay. So it's a process. So when we started the PAC, originally, we did not have the extension of the lobby. So we had just started heating. Once we knew there's enough of a bond dollars available to make the lobby more accommodating for five hundred people in the P C, that requires more calculations by the engineers to make sure both gas and electrical, we have enough electricity in the building and we have enough volume of gas to deal with all of the units and the increased sizes on the units. Never put more classrooms on just in the essence of that. So they can't do that work. So we got to the point that took us, what, about six months of development, going back and forth and going through the bond hours. And then they can do the calculation, hence why you see that come here at this point.
Well, I would say the best word that Mark used is it's a process, right? So there will be, as we've experienced, cost savings. When you, when they, when the original estimates, they thought maybe more extensive work was required. Then you start tearing walls down, moving roofs, and all said, oh wait, it isn't what we thought. It's a reduction in cost. And kind of virtually, when there's additional work required, that they didn't anticipate an increase in cost. All told, we meet twice weekly, right? Both as a local bond group, our employees and Julia, our site management, and then with a larger team from French and Arganello and other vendors that are contributing to project estimates. And basically, Julia functions as an onsite accountant, right? So her primary duty is to ensure that we're staying within the contingencies that every time there is an increase, we are looking at the next fit pack to see where we can achieve savings, to balance that out. Yet to dig into any major contingency fund, which is a good thing, you know, halfway through this project. And this summer represents the significant bulk of the work. And so it's a process. We're gonna run into these. This won't be the last time.
I know, I know that we've done it over the past. I'm just curious how that was not factored in.
Right.
Right, like that, those were my only reasons.
Yeah, and, you know, to Mark's point was like, okay, so we figure out the dollars that we allotted for the P A C. And it's pretty broad strokes on the asset side. And then, once they get in there, the designers, the architects, the engineers, recognize that, hey, you guys could do this. Do you want that? Yes, we do. Yes, we do. That is a significant upgrade for a very reasonable price. Okay, well, infrastructurally, what's required to support additional square footage that was not a reasonable gap in it? Great part is total cost, same, right? But additional in other unique areas.
I understand.
Yeah, great question.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Watson. Okay, we will head into our action items. The first one is our consent grouping, approval of the minutes of June fifth, twenty twenty-four.
I make a motion.
No, just wanna make sure any consent for finding this issue to be approved.
I make a motion that the reading of the minutes be weighed in the consent that John that items be approved as presented.
Support.
Okay, I have a motion in the court. Mrs. LaBarre?
Aye.
Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Mr. Littka?
Aye.
Dr. Novak?
Aye.
Mrs. Putnam says aye. Motion carries. Okay, we will go into our 2023-2024 final budget amendment. So we have quite a few of these amendments this evening. So the first one is the 2023-24 general fund amendment.
I'll make a motion that the 2023-2024 general fund amendment be approved as presented. Support.
Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Mrs. LaBarre?
Aye.
Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Mr. Littka?
Aye.
Dr. Novak?
Aye.
Mrs. Putnam says aye. Motion carries. We have 23-24 food service fund amendments.
I make a motion that the 2023-2024 food service fund amendments be approved as presented.
Support.
I have a motion and a support. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Mrs. LaBarre?
Aye.
Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Mr. Littka?
Aye.
Dr. Novak?
Aye.
Mrs. Putnam says aye. Motion carries. And we have 23-24 student activity amendment.
I'll make a motion, 23-24 student activity fund amendment be approved as presented.
Support.
I have a motion and a support. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Mrs. LaBarre?
Aye.
Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Mr. Littka?
Aye.
Dr. Novak?
Aye.
Mrs. Putnam says aye. Motion carries. Okay, we have the 23-24 2013 limited tax school building and site bond debt retirement fund.
I'll make a motion that the 2023-24 2013 limited tax school building and site bond debt retirement fund amendment be approved as presented. Support.
I have a motion and a support. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Mrs. LaBarre?
Aye.
Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Mr. Littka?
Aye.
Dr. Novak?
Aye.
Mrs. Putnam says aye. Motion carries. And we have 23-24 2014 limited tax.
I'll make a motion that the 2023-24 2014 limited tax school building and site bond debt retirement fund amendment be approved as presented.
Support.
Okay. I have a motion and a support. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Mrs. LaBarre?
Aye.
Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Mr. Littka?
Aye.
Dr. Novak?
Aye.
Mrs. Putnam says aye. Motion carries. And we have 23-24 2015 limited tax.
I make a motion that the 2023-2024 2015 limited tax school building and site bonds debt retirement funds amendment be approved as presented.
Support.
Okay. I have a motion and a support. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Mrs. LaBarre?
Aye.
Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Mr. Littka?
Aye.
Dr. Novak?
Aye.
Mrs. Putnam says aye. Motion carries. Now we have 23-24 2016 limited tax.
I'll make a motion that the 2023-24 2016 limited tax school building and site bonds debt retirement fund amendment be approved as presented.
Support.
I have a motion and a support. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Mrs. LaBarre?
Aye.
Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Mr. Littka?
Aye.
Dr. Novak?
Aye.
Mrs. Putnam says aye. Motion carries. And we have 23-24 2023 limited tax.
I'll make a motion that the 2023-2024 2023 limited tax school building and site bond debt retirement fund amendment be approved as presented.
Support.
I have a motion and a support. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Mrs. LaBarre?
Aye.
Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Mr. Littka?
Aye.
Dr. Novak?
Aye.
Mrs. Putnam says aye. Motion carries. Okay, now, at this time, the public hearing for the budget is now closed, so we will move on to the adoption of the 24-25 budget. So we will start with the 24-25 general fund amendments.
Motion that 24-25 general fund budget be adopted as presented. Support.
I have a motion and a support. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Mrs. LaBarre?
Aye.
Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Dr. Watson? Mr. Littka?
Aye.
Dr. Novak?
Aye.
Mrs. Putnam says aye. Motion carries. Twenty twenty, 24-25 food service fund budget.
I make a motion that the 2024-2025 food service fund budget be adopted as presented.
Support.
Okay. I have a motion and a support. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Mrs. LaBarre?
Aye.
Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Mr. Littka?
Aye.
Dr. Novak?
Aye.
Mrs. Putnam says aye. Motion carries. Twenty twenty, 24-25 student activity fund.
I'll make a motion that the 2024-25 student activity fund budget be adopted as presented.
I have a motion and a support. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Mrs. LaBarre?
Aye.
Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Mr. Littka?
Aye.
Dr. Novak?
Aye.
Mrs. Putnam says aye. Motion carries. Then we have 24-25 2013 limited tax.
I'll make a motion that the 2024-25 2013 limited tax school building and site bonds debt retirement fund be adopted as presented. Support.
Okay. I have a motion and a support. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Mrs. LaBarre?
Aye.
Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Mr. Littka?
Aye.
Dr. Novak?
Aye.
Mrs. Putnam says aye. Motion carries. 24-25 2014 limited tax.
I make a motion for 24-25 2014 limited tax school building and site bond debt retirement fund budget be adopted as presented. Support.
Okay. I have a motion and a support. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Mrs. LaBarre?
Aye.
Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Mr. Littka?
Aye.
Dr. Novak?
Aye.
Mrs. Putnam says aye. Motion carries. And we have 24-25 2015 limited tax.
I'll make a motion that the 2024-2025 2015 limited tax school building and site bond debt retirement fund budget be adopted as presented.
Support.
I have a motion and a support. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Mrs. LaBarre?
Aye.
Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Mr. Littka?
Aye.
Dr. Novak?
Aye.
Mrs. Putnam says aye. Motion carries. And we have 24-25 2016 limited tax.
I'll make a motion that the 2024-25 2016 limited tax school building and site bond debt retirement fund budget be adopted as presented. Question?
I have a motion and a support. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Mrs. LaBarre?
Aye.
Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Mr. LaBarre?
Aye.
Dr. Novak?
Aye.
Mrs. Putnam says aye. Motion carries. Then we have 24-25 2023 limited tax.
I'll make a motion that the 2024-2025-2023 limited tax school building and site bond debt retirement fund amendments be approved as presented.
Support.
I have a motion and a support. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Mrs. LaBarre?
Aye.
Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Mr. Littka?
Aye.
Dr. Novak?
Aye.
Mrs. Putnam says aye. Motion carries. Okay. We have the cash flow borrowing.
I'll make a motion that the line of credit cash flow borrowing resolution be approved as presented.
Okay. I have a motion and a support. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Mrs. LaBarre?
Aye.
Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Mr. Littka?
Aye.
Dr. Novak?
Aye.
Mrs. Putnam says aye. Motion carries. Food service contract for year old.
I'll make a motion that the food service contract with charcoal be renewed for the 2024-25 school year. Support.
I have a motion and a support. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Mrs. LaBarre?
Aye.
Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Mr. Littka?
Aye.
Dr. Novak?
Aye.
Mrs. Putnam says aye. Motion carries. Bid pack five point one, change order number two, gas line.
I'll make a motion that Dickerson Mechanical be awarded an additional amount not to exceed thirty-two thousand, six hundred, sixty-five dollars and eighty-three cents for the size of the gas piping we need to increase from two and a half inches to three inches to accommodate for the additional building square footage for the upcoming Performing Arts Center.
Okay. I have a motion and a support. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Mrs. LaBarre?
Aye.
Mrs. McKenna?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Mr. Littka? Dr. Novak?
Aye.
Mrs. Putnam says aye. Motion carries. So I think that is all of our action items for this evening. So I will open it up to board member communications.
Stop.
Stop. Stop.
I just wanna say thank you to the business office for all the work. I mean, getting budgets around and doing all that, ending the year and then beginning the next year, not fun, especially in uncertainty as we now own. So, um, yeah, thank you for your effort.
You may. So, we were ready, but I just wanted to share. So it's an interesting, uh, blah blah so far today. I did this three, five years. I've never had a year like this year. So this morning, we woke up to here. So remember my chart from two months ago? Senate three oh two, Governor two forty-one, House two oh one, foundation loans increase. This morning, we woke up to zero. Mental health, zero. Safety security, zero. Offset is maybe lower medical side of the retirement that I talked about, but not the numbers like K V two months ago, a little bit less. We have yet to see the period of need here, so it sounds too good to be true, so we don't think it's gonna get passed and it's gonna go through. I think it's the public negotiations of one faction of the Republicans side trying to push for something. We don't know what the push is for. Don't think the governor would ever sign something like this. It came through, but it was an eye opener on what's today, June twenty-sixth. And the governor promised we'd have a school budget by July first, two months ago or three months ago when we see to the state of the state. So if I have my years right, this is post-COVID twenty-one, where we didn't have the school budget probably until September, because legally, they don't need it until September thirtieth, right, October first. So it's gonna be an interesting start of the year if we don't see how it needs to break, uh, which is for election cycle, we break at the end of session here this week and don't return until after the summer for campaigning. And remember, all house seats are up this November. So there's a lot at stake here, but we're not seeing or hearing publicly, so it's a lot of guessing. So, uh, as I called Eric this morning, this is a big panic. A lot of the stuff that you know, Lisa, you know, cash flow, we think we redoing all this here in a month or two months or whatever, but it is what it is, and we'll deal with it when it shows up, and we'll make the appropriate strategic moves as we go forward. But there's nothing we do is watch this and wait and see for the dust to settle on where it's gonna go. It was a little frustrating because we have to start operating here next week for the new year, and we still don't know really what the revenues are that we have.
I do think it's supposed to be conservative of the county, just because I don't think the economy...
And it's what we did.
I think the idea we're seeing is that they're not being truthful about how the economy is.
We picked the governor's foundation, we picked one hundred and twenty-five students, and we did a number of things conservative, hence why you see the operating deficit, but that wasn't...
Because I don't think that came in as what they thought, but they're not being honest about it either.
So it's gonna be interesting, you have end of the week here and going into the summer to see what we have. So you'll be seeing us come back, and it'll fall at some point with amended budget. And Mark, as Mark and I have discussed, you know, we got out of the political prognostication business a long time ago, so between Republicans, Democrats, you know, this process, you know, has gotten increasingly more complicated in our time, not just in managing the peers' budget and, and, and variables implicit therein, but also our, our current education careers. The conservative estimation is the only way to go in today's day and age. Today is pie in the sky, actuaries and, and interest rate returns that they're projecting for particular funds, and we've just seen so many, so much volatility, given that the fact that at the national level, inflation has not abated. We've got all kinds of gamesmanship happening at the Fed. Too many political variables for us to estimate. Why, and Mark gives you his, at three thousand for view, we talk about federal variables, we talk about things happening at the state level, we talk about the local impact that are happening here in the county. All of that matters, right? Our primary objective here is to submit and get the approval from you, the board, the least variable budget that we think, and that's based on our collective experience, on us creating the tea leaves, and very little to do with lobbying associations, trying to figure out what the coffees is, public and the Democrats, about what we are gonna do, are we gonna posture themselves? Mark's point about all the seats being up in November is, I think, is important, but for our purposes, we're required to submit a balanced budget by June thirtieth. So when legislature wants to drop a bomb on the twenty-sixth, we're gonna deal with it like we always have, the best we can from a conservative position, but confidence in the fact that what we submitted to you accounts for some of that also.
You always wish that crystal ball, you know? So you can't predict. So don't overthink it, okay? So don't overthink it, okay?
So, I just wanna be aware of where we're at here in the late eleven-hour game of school budgeting and heading in. Appreciate the support, supporting and asking that. Most of you had experience, you know, we'll come back with adjustment. We always wait for the audit, get the final numbers in, and then know where that relatively is, and that should help us, um, a little bit in the, the adopting budget. On Frank, we know that the bad stuff happens. It was predictable, we've been planning this for two years, and we've got kind of a plan over the next two years to settle that back to a balanced budget, so. It's, hopefully, they don't throw a major curveball and, but interrupt that in, in that we have developed eighteen months ago, on Frank, as we headed into the first five times last year. So, you're right, we said there's plenty, we don't overreact, but we have to think long-term and beyond the fiscal year, so we know what's coming next time around. We, as a team, we have five contracts starting June twenty-five. That's a long time off, but that's, that's more fun in our heads already, in that conservative, as Matt said, trying to balance and see what we can do, so. Always thinking.
Appreciate it. Thanks, guys. It's a lot of work.
Um, the only one thing I have is, uh, I think last board meeting, we brought up the required mandated superintendent evaluation training. So, what the I S D has decided is now they're gonna kind of let the local school board handle their own way of executing that. Um, so Mary's gonna get all the details and email it out to us. It's gonna be a, a virtual option. We just need to complete that virtual training before September first. So, it gives us two months. I think we can do it. Um, so Mary will communicate that out to all of us, so that we can at least mostly give it, well, Mary, now, hey, we're done, and then it's required her to do every three years after that, so. I will turn it over to Superintendent Landry.
Thank you, Madam President. Brief comments this evening. Uh, thank you to the board, uh, for all of your participation in the end of year graduation ceremonies and events that we use to honor our graduating seniors. By all accounts, it was a great year. Really, really well-attended and flawlessly executed events. It's due in large part, mostly to our holding staffs, secretarial staff, administration, teachers, who really come together to make sure that our kids get honored appropriately.